We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a roll call.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Meany.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzica. Mayor, we do have a call.
Very good. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
We approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Personal appearance, I had Rob Solkowski from the Conservation Department, I guess he didn't make it, so maybe he'll show up a little bit later. He was going to talk a little bit about our problem with Skunks, and I had a lengthy conversation with him after the meeting on that following day, and got some things lined up, and he gave me some trappers and stuff that should help us out, but I was hoping he'd be here to speak about it, but maybe he'll be a little bit later. I'll take it's Martin's report, City Administrator's report.
Okay. Twice a year, the southeast Missouri regional city administrators meet and to talk about our common interests and problems and solutions, and this time Jason Smith attended our meeting, which was nice to have the congressman come and visit with us. And every time I have an opportunity to meet with an elected representative, I tell them about something that I think is going to be a problem in the future, and we can't fix it. We, the city of St. Genevieve, have a use tax, so we're in a fairly good position, but as retail sales are diverted away from brick-and-mortar stores who live and do business in our cities, sales tax doesn't necessarily get paid, and while when a city establishes a physical presence in a state, they will pay sales tax under certain court decisions that mandated that, if they don't have a physical presence, they don't have to, and there's no mechanism to make them. And so it's going to take an act of Congress to change that, and the problem is that if Congress doesn't address it, our sales tax base is going to continue to erode. Now, we've been doing pretty well, and we do collect use tax, so that's growing as a percentage of our revenue, but hopefully, he acknowledged that he was aware of the problem and suggested he will spend some time looking at it. It's very complicated and very controversial at the national level, but it will be a problem. And again, we're not experiencing it right now, but it's coming. Sandra's not here yet, she's supposed to report tonight, but the mayor and I met with representatives of an organization known as Relay of Voices, and I was going to let Sandra explain it to you, but since she's not here, I'll try and jump in.
Oh, no, you can.
There is a woman in Chicago who's from Louisiana, who's this, like, for lack of a better term, performance artist, and she's organizing this relay, this series of runs from Chicago all the way, following the Mississippi River all the way down, and she'll be stopping in certain cities along the way, and she's asked the cities to help support, not financially support her effort, but accommodate them. And so the mayor and I and Sandra met with them, and while it's a little kind of out of my frame of reference, it's kind of, it doesn't look like art to me, but who am I? They're going to have a following, and there's going to be people paying attention to them, and there'll be these rallies, and so we've agreed to make sure that they come to St. Genevieve, they have a place to stay, and they have some resources at their disposal, and they will stay, if the city cooperates, they're going to stay overnight and arrange with the schools to interact with kids and do some presentations and things. So it was very interesting, again, not the kind of thing that I would normally pay attention to, but I think could bring some attention to the community, and certainly, there's no downside for us to support the effort.
When is?
I believe it's next year, next summer is when they, I think they'll be coming through.
August, September.
September of 2019.
Well, schools will be in session, you were saying, schools.
There's a new owner for 59 South Main, which is the old fire station, not Station 21, but the actual firehouse, engine house, and he came in to visit with me, turns out, a guy I've known for a long time, he was a former city administrator in Arnold and his finance manager for the Fox School District, who is retiring, moving to Lake Forest, has an affection for St. Genevieve, and wants to be a property owner and open up some kind of business activity. So I went over the zoning with him and gave him the list of uses, but it looks like he'll be coming in and trying to kind of convert that back to a mixed use with some residential and storefront there.
How about a distillery?
Well, the distillery guy didn't make it.
I was looking forward to that.
Yeah, I was thinking that would be a pretty good. I talked to Stan Trobman, and he explained that the, I'm not sure I remember, but it wasn't a problem here, it was a problem there, he had trouble shutting down what was going on there. We resolved the great tombstone issue, I want to thank Steve for the idea. What we ended up doing, that both sides of that stone were polished, so we went on the side that wasn't made and put the engraving on it, moved it over and turned it around. So now the names are lined up with where they're buried, on both sides of the tombstone, the family's happy, and they agreed to split the cost with us, so it cost us each about $300.
Oh, wow.
Nice job, Steve.
I'm again reporting some frustration with the progress of getting the lease purchase agreement approved, I met with the bank, the bank says, you know, all I do is the loan documents, the legal language is the lawyer's concern. So I said, well, the lawyer won't talk to me because he says you're his client, so you have to talk to the lawyer. So I met with the bank, I went through the document, I expressed my concern for the things that are in the document, and said, okay, now would you, and so I'm still waiting for that to happen. I polled the board by email and raised this issue, we have a new employee who is a concealed carry advocate. He asked if the city allows employees to carry. Our personnel policy is silent on the issue, so I advised him not to until we had a chance to talk about it. Several of you have responded, expressing your opinion that you didn't think it was a good idea for a city employee to carry a gun at work. We don't allow guns in municipal buildings, so there's always kind of that consideration. I wouldn't want an employee keeping a gun in a city vehicle while they're out working in the park, but it's legal, and lots of people feel strongly about it, so if we're going to have a policy that says you shouldn't do that, or said employees shouldn't do that, I want to revise the personnel policy to reflect it. Anybody have an opinion contrary to my revising the policy to include a prohibition of carrying firearms while at work?
Well, what I brought it up and stuff is, do they ever leave, you know, the city limits and stuff for city business, you know, we need to address that issue also.
Well, we do occasionally, most often it's a trip to Farmington to pick something up or Perryville or someplace where it's not available locally. We do training from time to time that's outside of the city, but it's not regular, and it's usually for either that educational or just purposes of picking something up, you know, the other thing that we do from time to time, when Park Hills had the rain down there that caused a road to heave, you know, we offered assistance, and so if they had accepted it, they didn't, they said they had it under control, we might have gone down to help them out, but. Would you want me to look at putting something in that allows it with city administrator's permission if you're going outside of the city on city business?
I don't know, I just think we need to address both areas, if they're working here and if they leave.
Okay, I'll put in a provision for the CA's approval under special circumstances, and then it's up to the city administrator to decide whether it's appropriate.
I wasn't advocating pardon to carry, I just thought we needed to address if they leave.
Well, now's the.
City business.
You just say if they're doing city business.
Well, I don't want them at all, I mean, we don't know their competency with a weapon or is, police department has regular training on it, you know. There's no reason, there's no need for them to have it while they're on our dime, we don't need the liability there.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree with Joe, otherwise you're going to have this, we need to have one policy and abide by it, you know.
Cochran's coming here tomorrow to go over the water tower design, preliminary designs that they've issued, the county will be here, the bank will be here, I'll be here, any of you are welcome to be here.
What time?
I think it's 10 o'clock, let me check. They have, you know, Van Leeuwen on Friday, 9:00. It was at 10:00, and the bank asked if we'd move it up an hour.
Won't be able to be here.
Okay.
Festus.
They've drawn, their preliminary drawings, I mean, it's hard for me to critique the design standards for a water tower, so it doesn't mean a lot for me to look at it, but things like the use of the land, and where we put the access road, and they're making assumptions, I think, that the grade is too steep, but they don't have the information of how it's changed since the Challenger Field went in, so we just need to get all on the same page and make sure they're designing what's going to work for us. The, I met with the county and the contractor on the expansion of the community center, and they pretty well obliterated the trail through there, and they want to put it back a little differently than it was. For instance, right now, our trail has kind of a grass strip between the curve, and in order to do that, they would have to cut into the hillside and, you know, and put in a retaining wall, a little short retaining wall, we're trying to work it back in on a three-to-one slope up to the building, and so we agreed that they could just move it back and do away with the grass strip. And they want to change drainage structures, and I think in ways that will improve the, so it was a good meeting, and we've agreed on the adjustments that need to be made, and it's all going to work out. We had a meeting with the Industrial Development Corporation representatives here yesterday. You know, you had looked at that proposed subdivision layout and said you at least supported the idea of the city making the property available on Progress Park Drive for residential development. They said, okay, now what are you going to do? And I said, well, what do you mean, what am I going to do? We've already done what we thought you wanted us to do. And I said, well, didn't you say you would solicit developers? And I said, I'd be glad to send a letter, now tell me who to send a letter to. And it came back with a meeting and said, well, you know, we really haven't, not sure who. But the one thing that came up was that lot, that design with those 50-foot fronts, they just really didn't think had a lot of market potential. So I called Gove Row and, for two reasons, one is I sent him an email, they asked him to do a design with 80-foot fronts, which is more typical subdivision lot size, and see if any of the developers with whom he works on subdivision design north of here would be interested, and he said he would put the word out and see if he can find anybody who would be interested. We did a pre-bid walkthrough today with two potential bidders on the overlay work. It's, Main Street's a kind of challenge because, you know, you don't have much grade difference, and so it's going to be a lot of milling down to get sufficient depth to put the street back in so that it doesn't exceed the height of the sidewalk we just put in two years ago, and so that'll all work out. Ridgeway actually is going to be easier to do, the only thing with Ridgeway is, you know, you've got a lot of driveways and working with the customers on working that out, but I think everybody's going to look forward to the improvement, so I don't think there'll be a problem. Finally, is at the park board meeting, there was some discussion, you may have read it in Mark's column, about painting poles, utility poles in the park. The mayor had a conversation with Ron Klein, and Ron met with his people, and they said, well, we're not totally in favor of putting the paint actually on the poles, but they would be willing to support the idea of coming up with this kind of wrap that we could paint that would go on the poles. And nobody's quite sure what that material would be, or where, you know, we'd get it, as somebody mentioned, using PVC pipe, but, you know, not that flexible so you can put a sleeve around it. So anyway, they're going to look at those options, and it was an interesting conversation, I thought, anyway, and it was nice of them to come there. Lawrence Meyer was there, representing the downtown group, and submitted a proposed landscaping plans, and this is money that we had given them to use, and so he has picked the trees that should go there and where they should go, so the park board signed off on that, and they're going to proceed with putting some landscaping in at the Gage Park. Any questions? It was a, see, I had so many things, I had to kind of squeeze them down to get them on the business. And then I included in your packet the proposed schedule for the water tower, so you kind of know where things stand with that.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Martin. Steve, you're up.
Two people are times to the gas company, entire gas over on the office of Bill Moore area.
They're borrowing new gas mains through the area. In doing so, you have to locate everything for the entire neighborhood. Occasionally, they've come across some lines we didn't know were there, some that we knew were there, they damaged just a few so far, but most of the time was spent over there trying to prevent that from happening. So for the size of their project, I think they're doing a fine job in damage prevention, so, and they're letting us know everything that they're doing all the time, so.
They're not even tearing up the street, they're doing the old-gone drilling.
Yeah, they're doing the underground boring, yes.
Underground boring, you call it.
Painting inside the water plants continued, as the condensation allows, of course, mowing, weed eating, it's all in full force right now. Any question?
How much are you drilling the plant?
We're shutting the plant down about 6:00 every day.
That's so long, you think.
Yeah, we moved it up two hours already, past couple of weeks, been hit, it's pretty good.
Any more questions? Thank you, Steve. You're up.
Good evening, everyone. So I think at the last meeting, we talked about some of the schedule for groups, both student groups coming here to learn about the Missouri history, state history, or adult groups coming here to visit St. Genevieve, and in the last six weeks, we have had 15 student groups and 10 adult group tours that visited us with more than 2,500 guests in that period of time, whether they were tour groups or just walk-in guests, so it's been a pretty busy ramp-up period. I included at the bottom of the report there just an example of a thank-you note that we received from one of our group tour coordinators, it's always nice to have that kind of recognition, and we keep a smile file on a door at the Welcome Center that has all the little notes that we get, sometimes from students, sometimes from individuals passing through, might not have ever been to St. Genevieve before, but I just thought you might like to see one of those, just to share it. And, sorry, you're welcome. Latest update on the National Park Service is that last week, in the final days of the regular session, the Missouri Legislature approved the Conveyance Bill, this basically authorized the state DNR to convey to the federal government for use by the Department of Interior when they are forming the National Park site here, and so these were the state-owned properties primarily along St. Mary's Road, and of course, the Dulles Sue Kern House. There was some good coverage in The Herald about that, I'm sure you've all seen that, but I just wanted to include it in the report so that we've, you know, got it documented for future reference. Also, last Friday, we were notified that the National Society of Colonial Dames was going to close all the New France properties here in St. Genevieve due to unforeseen circumstances. You have a copy in your packet of two bits of recent update on that, the good news is that they are working through those issues, and until it is fully resolved, they have made arrangements so that the Center for French Colonial Life, who I'm sure many of the Aldermen toured either during the ribbon cutting or the first few weeks that it was open, it will be open this weekend, on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday for the holiday weekend, and it will be saffed by volunteers from the Colonial Dames Organization, until such a time as they can work out all the details to get the rest of the site open, so we're very encouraged by that. And last week and this week, we received updates from the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Project on the subject of the wayfinding signs and the final steps in that production to get those finished, so we're hoping that'll be soon, and as previously reported, we have done some paid advertorials, the most recent one was in last Sunday's Post-Dispatch in what they call the Summer Fun Guide, we did a full page, and they gave us Page Three, which is, you open up the cover, Page Three is right there, so I'm sure some of you already saw it, I brought a copy of it here with me this evening, there's someone who did not see it and would like to. That's my report, if anyone has any questions.
Senator.
Yes.
I was going to ask about the guides, they get on large buses and then use their, I guess, microphones or whatever.
Yes, they do. So we offer a step-on guide service, yes.
Yeah, I did see one the other day, and I was thinking that it was our people in there with the microphone, I was hoping.
Yes, usually it's a local historian who is dressed in French colonial costume, and they greet them at the Welcome Center, and they tell them a little bit, you know, about why they're wearing what they're wearing, and they get onto the tour bus with them, and it's generally about a 30-minute route, and they take them through the significant area of the Historic District downtown, and usually they go down on St. Mary's Road too to hit some of those sites. It kind of depends on how the tour bus schedule is going, they're kind of notorious for, you know, they usually come a long way to get here, and sometimes they're running, you know, 10, 15, 30 minutes behind, and we try to do what we can to get them back on their schedule, and sometimes that means a condensed step-on tour, but they're really, they go over really well, people really enjoy them, they enjoy the guides being in the French colonial costume, they always find it interesting, they always have tons of questions for them.
Kind of tough for that bus driver, I always know a little bit about that.
Yes, but you know, these are usually bus direct, well, as you know, they can thread a needle with some of those big buses, and it amazes me sometimes, every now and then you'll hear the beep-beep button going off, it does happen.
Yeah, private interest.
Yeah, did you have questions?
Concerning the National Parks and stuff, do you have any idea as far as their actual physical staffing here or facility or?
Well, they haven't gotten to that point in their planning, that will be figured out by the Regional Office, and where it is right now, the National Office has to talk to the Regional Office, this is how they do all their park sites and historic sites, so we're really early in the process, and of course, we're all very excited about it, and they know we're very excited about it, and they know that we just can't wait to, you know, work with them on our planning, but they have not told us the specifics as to how many staff that they'll have or where they'll be located.
Fair or something is that we'll be a large presence.
Right.
Oh, that's true, yes. We'll probably, we'll probably learn a lot about that in the months ahead, and they know that we're very eager to do so. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Sandra.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
I don't have much to report, you have my report there, we are back at full staff, we hired two that just graduated from the academy, I'm hoping one of them will be here soon, he comes in at 7:00 tonight, so I'd like to introduce him, if we don't make that happen, we'll try to get around and get everybody introduced, so, they seem to be doing all right, it's really too soon to tell, one is from Deluge, one's from Perryville, we hired Joseph Goldsmith from Perryville and Bradley Osborne from Deluge, so we're hopeful that they stick around, so we'll see, see what happens.
He's delivering.
Yeah.
Did they make it around to deliver?
Yeah, they made it around.
Good, good. So they both seem personable, and I think that they'll be a good fit for us, so, it's always a gamble, so we'll see, I'm optimistic.
I wish them well, and I hope they stay a while.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't, unless anybody has any specific questions, so.
I'd like to make a statement, one of our officers came to me after we had a discussion about the possibility of law enforcement, sale of property tax, expressed to me his gratitude to the board, I forgot to do it at our last meeting, for giving that consideration, and he said, you know, I don't want to leave here, but at some point, I've got to consider my livelihood and the opportunities that are presented to me, and he said, I've decided to wait and see what happens. And so your fair consideration of that issue, whatever the voters may decide, I think was well-received by the police force.
Actually, by the way, based on Jefferson Counties, after their sales tax increase that just went into effect, and their officers are starting out at $50,000 and some change, and then obviously going up from there with corporals, the corporal makes $16,000 more than I do now, starting out, so, I mean, it's significant, and, you know, that's close enough that it will definitely, I think, affect us, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people, honestly, that just don't want to work in St. Louis, me being one, you know, so I don't know that those sales tax up there affect us as greatly, but Jefferson County's right across the interstate from us, right up the road, and, you know, so they're certainly busy also, but it's definitely going to affect us, I know Petosi just passed one, and they're starting out significantly higher than we are, and increasing staff, and, you know, and they're similarly sized, so I have spoken with our attorney about the possibilities, and we're looking at some options there as far as the feasibility, our deadline on that is August, so, to get it on the November ballot, so it's certainly something that we're looking at plugging away at and get something with, obviously, the board's consent, but something that we would be interested in looking at, so, you know, we certainly appreciate any support that we can get there, so. A captain is at $89,000, a lieutenant colonel's at $99,000, so.
You're not going to make that.
We're not going to make that. But it's just, just for comparison purposes, so, I don't know what the sheriff makes, it doesn't have that on there, but I'm sure he's.
Not that much.
Not that much?
No, because he's.
It's set by a state.
Because he's a sheriff, he's a licensed official, he's constrained by the salary limitations of the state statute.
How do we compare to Petosi? Because that's a very light county and city.
Yeah, they were, population, I think, were comparable, I think that they have a few more officers than we do now, and I believe they start out at a dollar and a half more now, even before their sales tax, but I don't have those hard numbers, I could get those for you.
Yes, I think that would be a good comparison, a good place to start.
Yeah, and, I mean, they said their initiative won, you know, two to one over there, so I think that there's certainly, and we've said for a long time, we certainly have great support here, I mean, as far as. support here. I mean, as far as our, as far as our citizens, you know, we certainly feel appreciated and...
Well, you all got copies of that salary survey that was in the budget.
So, you know, we do certainly appreciate that, so hopefully that would reflect in this initiative if we were able to move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Eric.
Any committee reports?
Attended to Heritage Commission Monday night. Things went smoothly.
Great. Keep them going smooth, though.
I have no control over that whatsoever.
Maybe you're present.
I'm just happy to report everything went smooth.
Right. What about planning and zoning, Joe?
No, we didn't have that meeting.
You didn't have anything, did you?
Well, you should have.
Yeah, we just have a social gathering so you don't forget each other.
Yes.
That's almost five minutes early tonight.
Exactly. Kathy Walsh asked, we have a board of zoning adjustment, and it hasn't met in years.
Yeah.
And she said, why aren't, you know, the chairman of that asked Kathy, what's going on? Why haven't we had a meeting? And I said, well, there has to be somebody who's appealing the decision of the zoning officer before you have a meeting. That hadn't happened. Until it happened, there's no need to meet, or is asking a variance from the zoning order.
Yep. All righty.
Martin, any updates on the building inspection?
Still looking. I've been turned down once by a qualified person.
Was that the one that had to talk to his wife?
Yep.
Uh-oh. She said no, huh?
I didn't, I didn't. He said, I've got some other things working and something going to develop, and, you know, it really wouldn't be fair for me to do this, and then had that happen, and, you know, okay.
All righty. Is there any, Joe, Randy?
I just had a question. Before we get into the consent agenda, we have a group of liquor licenses that are up for approval, and I would just like to ask our chief of police if he has any reservations about any of them.
I haven't reviewed them, but if they're all standing.
Okay.
We have...
Okay, all right.
It's good.
Thank you.
Good question.
And then also in regards to the consent agenda, I talked to Bryant Wolfen earlier today. He didn't know it was on the agenda tonight. Nobody told him, and he definitely would have been here to introduce himself to everybody, and he apologized as for not being here, but nobody told him to. So he said he'll make it to the next meeting or so, to say hi to everybody.
That's very good. Thanks, Joe. Why don't you tell me?
I'm...
You're his friend. Oh, very good.
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, you're right. All right. Any other comments from the committees? I don't think we have any here for public comments, so that'll take us to the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That takes us to old business. Takes us to Bill Number 4223, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional engineering design services with Cochran Engineering for Chadwell Lane and Highway 61.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Moon?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Eight vote, or eight yes votes. Bill Number 4223 now becomes ordinance Number 4154.
Thank you very much. Have no new business or other business? Any other communication we need to have here? So I need to have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Need a roll call vote?
For the purpose of...
For the purpose of real estate.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Moon?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.